I'm recording it.
Oh my goodness.
Can you hear me? Talk Bailey.
Hello.
Talk again.
Hello.
That's good. You heard from... Well, Brian responded that he was gonna be a part of it, didn't he?
Yes, he did.
Yeah, he, he popped up for a second, but then went away. I don't know if something happened. There he is. Maybe. He popped up and went away again. I don't know what's going on.
Alright. There he is. Hey Brian, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can't see you though.
Hold on. What's that?
There you go. Alright, so we are going to open the public hearing at 5:01. About 5:01. Um, the only public that we have is Mark. Mark, do you have any questions on chapter 38? I think Bailey got you a copy of it.
I did not receive a copy of it.
Alright, she's gonna... While she's doing that, let's go over, we did finally get back, should be in your emails, Brian. The lighting for the night sky, were you waiting?
Yes.
So, some of the suggestions that AppCog gave were... It's hard for me to see because I didn't do it. So the white string mini lights, they mentioned for other specifying for it not to exceed 20 lumens per lamp or 50 lumens per linear foot of string. Is that... Something that, is that, I don't know, is that necessary? I mean, if it's mini lights?
Well, hold on, these are exemptions, huh?
Yeah.
Exemptions, the following types of lighting are exempt from the standard in this subsection. White string mini lights use the windows displays or in trees, bushes, and shrubs. And this is for our lighting ordinance?
Well, it's all part of chapter 38. Bailey, were you able to send that over to Mark?
Yes, I just sent it again.
Alright.
These lighting revisions came straight from the International Dark Skies Association.
I apologize. I, I don't see where we would add something there. Now, the next one down with short-term use. I, I don't disagree with specifying what temporary is, or what short-term is.
Yeah, that should be like, I would say like 90 days.
I wouldn't go 90 days.
No, 30?
It's for festivals, celebrations, and...
What do you think about like Christmas lights and stuff? Right?
But it's for public festivals, celebrations.
Sure, short-term use of like public festivals and the observation of holidays. I'm still stuck on number two though, white string mini lights. Why are those are, why are those exempt? Like I can see being, them being exempt in the displays, but in trees, bushes, and shrubs. Why are those being exempt if we're creating a lighting ordinance for the dark sky? I don't understand that.
Did Mark leave?
I guess.
What do you think, Brian? Do you think that should remain in there?
You know, I, I'm not a fan of big government and I'm, I'm curious, how is this gonna be policed? You know, is, is somebody gonna knock on your door, say, uh, your neighbor turned you in because your lights have been on for 31 days? You know, or is somebody gonna gauge how many lumens each light is? I mean, are, are we, are we making decisions just for the sake of making decisions? I, I, I am all in favor of the dark sky initiative. I just don't know how it's gonna be enforced.
So, my thoughts on how other things are enforced is that they would come to the code enforcement officer.
I'm sorry, did you say something to me?
Uh, that's, that's how I would enforce that, I would think also.
Yeah, about how the dark sky...
And it would be a complaint, Brian, when you see it. You know, somebody, your neighbor would call on you.
I think that's how we would approach it, same as we approach like trees being taken down. It's kind of, if I see it, I may address it, or if someone sends in a complaint, I would address it.
Okay. So, in, in terms, you know, Wes had a good point that, uh, we were talking about, uh, public displays, not private displays. Um, what, what do we have going on in Rangeley that goes on for more than seven or 10 days, aside from like Snowdew?
So, Wes was talking about Christmas decorations.
Okay, for businesses.
For businesses, correct.
You know, you gotta figure, people get set up just before Thanksgiving and they stay up until just after New Year's.
So, you wanna say 60 days?
60, yeah, we can do that.
Yeah, we could do 60, eh?
I don't think 30 is enough. The 60 would be enough.
Yeah, I would say 60.
I do know that there were people that were going to be joining this meeting and Mark said he was kicked off multiple times. So, I don't know if we're having an issue on our end and that's why we don't have anyone right now.
I don't know.
On the... They could dial in or call, they could call the number if there was an issue, I guess.
Right. I'm gonna see if I can join on my phone and see if it works.
Here, I'll turn it to you.
Mine's working. I'm gonna see if maybe it's gonna kick me off.
See if it'll let me in. Yeah, I've got no issues. It's gotta be on Mark's end.
Yeah, it must be. I mean, you're probably connected to the same internet I am on my phone, so...
Alright, so for the lighting, for number four. Do you wanna have 60 days in there?
Yeah.
Alright. You okay with that, Brian?
I am.
Alright, um...
I still don't understand number two though.
I think a lot of people have just those little, those little mini lights for decorations. I don't know, we can put them on our deck, like, I don't know. A lot of people have little mini lights on a click around their porch or...
Which is fine.
I think that's why it specifies mini.
I mean, we put that in.
We did?
Yeah, we had the white string mini lights. The thing that's in this new, in this, he was just noting the, the lumens per lamp. So, we had the white string lights there before.
If I, if I made a complaint, how are you gonna check the lumens?
Yeah, I was just thinking of that too.
It's a suggestion, we don't have to do it.
Alright, I would say move on past that.
Yeah, alright.
Alright, um...
Fully shielded, right? Number three, there's a note there. I think that's fine.
Okay. So, the FAA one, it says you might wanna make the draw more general? Alright, uh, I, I like the note that's on the side.
I would agree with that note.
Yeah.
Me too.
So Bailey, you, I would go with what was written in the note.
Okay.
Fully shielded. And then what they were talking about is adding the definition for fully shielded. Right?
Yeah. But they say there's no universal definition. But I can't imagine that that is correct.
Her definition, or I, I won't say her, but the definition suggested seems plausible to me. That it emits no light directly above the horizontal plane passing through the portion of the fixture closest to the ground.
Yes, that is, that's a fully, that is a fully shielded fixture. I, that is what it is, but they wrote in the second line, there is no universal definition, which I can't imagine.
Well, the, the last sentence suggested is a fully shielded fixture is simply designed so that it does not intentionally direct any light upwards into the night sky. I, I, I don't think I could come up with a better definition.
Oh, fair.
Alright.
Is that not already what's there? It's kind of defined in that sentence?
What, on, on here?
The, the, be fully shielded to direct all light towards the ground?
Well, it's not necessarily towards the ground. You know, if it's a ground-mounted light pointed up at a business sign, it's already going above horizontal. I would just argue that it should be not directing any excess light towards the sky.
Well, I, you just gotta come up with a definition for it. You should be able to Google it and pull a definition up and just stick it in there. Ready?
I pulled up some. I have fixtures are shielded in such a manner that light rays emitted by the fixture either directly from the lamp or indirectly from the fixture are projected below a horizontal plane running through the lowest point on the fixture where light is emitted. I feel like that's kind of complicated for what we're trying to say.
You wanna just keep it the way it is?
Yeah, keep it the way it is.
Brian?
Yes.
Yeah, be fully shielded to direct all light towards the ground so that the lighting elements are not exposed to normal view. That is a fully shielded fixture.
Alright.
Well, the, like I said though, what if, what if it's a ground-mounted light pointed up as a sign?
I don't know if you could...
Like, like at, I think Furbish House has their sign illuminated by ground-mounted lights. They're shielded, but they're pointed upwards.
No, they don't. They got it, uh, they got their lighting underneath the, can't be of the sign.
Okay.
Uh, I don't know if you could take a fully shielded light and flip it upside down, and if you did, it's not gonna last very long. Well, throw a definition in there. What do they have written for a definition? It's probably a fully shielded fixture.
It's what that one is written for.
Yeah, well then, we'll just throw that as a definition and call it good.
Well, like I said, my, my only addition would be using the last sentence of, of their suggestion.
Fully shielded fixture is simply designed so it does not intentionally direct any light upwards into the night sky. Yeah.
Alright Bailey, I, I have an agreement. You an agreement, Ross?
Yeah.
Alright, so Bailey, add that as a definition, literally the last sentence there in the comments. A fully shielded fixture is simply designed so that it does not intentionally direct any light upwards into the night sky.
So, we're going, we're taking away from ground to the end of that note and replacing it with the last sentence of the, the added note?
Yes.
Okay.
Alright, Mark, were you able to get, I know there was connection difficulties. Were you able to get the, um, chapter 32 in your email?
Mark's on mute.
I know, who knows?
I, I just got reconnected, yeah, uh, and I can't check my emails and watch the Zoom meeting at the same time. So, I'll have to look, check my emails after the meeting's over.
Okay, alright. Do you have any questions? Sorry, I don't give a review, but do you have any questions?
I would have to read the, my emails first, I guess, to see what the clean, the chapter 38 looks like. But at this time, I don't have any questions.
I just, just so you're aware, Mark, there hasn't really been any changes since the last one that you received. It's just cleaned up, so there aren't as many notes on it.
Did you hear that, Mark?
I, I did, okay.
Okay.
But I guess it gets discussed again at the, on April 5th at the town warrant because those things are on the town warrant, so I guess, uh, the public gets another chance at input before it's finalized on April 5th, if I understood that correctly. So, it seems like I may have time to catch up anyway.
Yes. Okay, uh, Bailey, is the, okay, there's any... Alright, so we discussed it in the regular scheduled meeting.
Do we wanna continue talking about lighting? Uh, there were a few more added things.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't switch over to the other page.
And I did see the, the people that were aware of the meeting were given the wrong time by someone else. So, I just quickly sent out that email, so we may have some people joining shortly.
What do you mean the wrong time?
They were told 6 o'clock, not 5 o'clock.
Yeah, it's 2.
What was that?
See, I don't think I know what any of that is.
What, uh, the curfew?
Yeah.
Number four?
I know what I heard.
Are you on number four? Or are you on number five?
I was on number, uh, oh.
The number four look, sounds good to me. If you guys have read it.
I agree with that. Are you okay with number four, Brian?
Uh, as it's written, yes.
Alright.
Number five?
That's mine.
So, basically, I kinda, I I agree with that for the most part. Like
We talked about number five before.
What's that?
We added number five last time we talked about lighting.
Yeah, I like that. I think there should be, we're gonna think about, uh, I think there should be some exemptions. For the most part, it's good. I think it should be limited to 3,000 K, which is like basically the color of the lights that are in this room right here. There are certain situations where a brighter color, uh, would be nicely, take for example, the, uh, the, the, the the war memorial we have, um, in town. I put in some 5,000 K lights on that memorial and it really makes it pop. And I think people appreciate that. It makes it look very good. Now, I don't know how we would write something up, but I think there could be some exemptions to that.
I don't know about the exemptions. I think that this, this one came directly from the International Dark Skies to be qualified for that designation.
It did.
I'm not positive, but I believe that's where that came from.
Okay. Oh, that might just answer it then.
Yeah, but we don't have to go with their recommendation. I mean, if we have, like you said, there's certain things that there's exemption for. I, I would never have thought of that.
A bright white light would really make, well, for, and then the, the memorial is the only thing that I, that really stands out in my mind. That bright light, that bright white light really makes it pop.
Yeah.
You know, and it makes it look good and, you know, to a lot of people, you know, you, you want that place to look good.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? So, uh, yeah, that's kind of like, I don't know how, what, if we did exemptions, I don't even know how we'd write it up.
I mean...
Maybe it's something we could put in a...
Like governmental or memorial?
Right. And then everything else is, we'll keep it at like the 3,000 K mark. Memorial governmental, we can get like approval from the, uh, the code enforcement officer to do something a little bit different or something.
You wanna just say municipal?
What's that?
Do you wanna just say municipal?
Yes. With approval or, you know, municipal with, you know, approval from the CEO or something like that.
So, this is a, a new no under exemptions that you wanna add?
Certain situations where, you know, that we, we might wanna have a little, a little window room with it.
Yeah. So, would you add that under the exemptions?
I think that would be the best place for it.
Yeah, alright. And you guys wanna say instead of, uh, just, do you wanna do state, municipal, or memorial?
Yeah, that's fine, man.
Brian?
Yeah, well, memorial falls under municipal or state, does it not?
That's true.
And stuff like that would have to be exempt from, from, uh, from, from the, uh, fully shielded fixtures too, you know what I mean? Because, you know, you can't like that memorial with the fully shielded fixtures, it's not gonna work.
If it's under exemptions, then it is exempt from anything in this section.
Perfect.
So, do we wanna say lighting for state and municipal monuments would be under discretion of code enforcement officer? Something like that?
Yeah.
That's, I, I would agree with that. I, I like that.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that. Something to that effect.
Hold on, I have somebody trying to get in. Hey. Hello? I'm sorry. Hello? Uh, you can do that or just go onto your Zoom link? Well, it's not a link that, I, you have to get Zoom, so you go to the town of Rangeley website and just click on the landing board and it should like do it. Yes. It should, look on that home screen. Or, hold on, I'll have Bailey send the link to you, the email, okay? Alright, bye. Bye. Bailey, can you please send, can Bailey the link? To the Zoom? Thank you. Alright, what were you guys saying?
Uh, we could put an exemption in for the memorial on the, um...
Okay.
So, we're on the number six, right?
Yeah.
Illuminated stables. Which I think needs to be changed to, for businesses, for business hours.
Yeah, but you already have something.
Yeah, I know, we're a little contradicting ourselves here with this one, I think, right?
Yeah, I would say take that out. Uh, cause... Uh, because. Where goes that? It's under curfew, it's under number four.
Right, so we're kind of contradicting ourselves between number six and number four. At least on businesses.
Yeah, I would say, uh, my suggestion is to take that out. Or.
Or add. You know, something about business hours into it, because you, I mean, you could do that with them. People, people like their residential home signs, which maybe we want those to be shut off an hour. I don't even know why. I, I don't know.
I, I think it's just redundant.
Yeah, it's redundant too.
Number six. Because we, you know, the. After say eight o'clock, I, I would say the only signs on are, are business signs and they're bars or restaurants. Uh, you know, they've got neon signs in the window, they've got lights to illuminate their, the names of their businesses or their business sign. But those ju, they generally turn off at 1:00 AM.
Right, and they need to. You can't, you put a business sign off at seven o'clock, it doesn't do you flowers.
Well, that's the, the normal business hours note there as well.
Do you guys want to just keep four and get rid of six?
That, that's what I would think.
I would get rid of six.
Alright. Alright, so this is.
I don't want to make this thing too restrictive for people.
Is it? I can't, I need, Mr. Stein? Do you have any questions about, uh, chapter 32? Concerns? No?
Maybe Karen.
Alright, um, Mr. Haley, do you have any questions on chapter 32?
What's that?
Do you have any questions on chapter 32?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Stein doesn't, alright.
I have one person joining right now.
What are you talking about?
Uh, whoever has the sign with a big N. Nancy, do you have any questions on chapter 32?
No, I don't think so.
Alright, and. David Stein, do you have any questions on chapter 32?
38.
I, I have a question for Nancy, if I may, Nancy. Uh, before you got here, and, and I got on late also.
Yes.
Um, they were talking about, uh, uh, business signs and hours of operation. Um, and, and I just don't know, you're closer to this than I am, Nancy. Um, are, is this all consistent with, with the provisions that you've been studying, or are you familiar with them?
Uh, well, it's so, yeah, I apologize for jumping in late. Somehow we ended up miss, uh, rep, you know. Thinking it was at five and then six and then, then finding it was five. Um, so I'm not sure exactly where you're at in the process here, but, so are these lighted signs you're referring to though, or are they not lighted?
Lighted.
I think what he was saying was there is number, uh, four and number six. In the ordinance, number four is for commercial industrial non-residential outlet, all non-essential lighting shall be turned off after business hours. With the only the minimum necessary lighting for safety, security, and so on.
Right.
The, uh, playboard has agreed to take out number six because we feel that it is just kind of repeating what's going on in number four.
Okay, let me see if I can bring up the document, so I can look at that. Um, I think the difference was one, um, referred to internally lit signs and then the other was just lit signs. So it could be a light that's shining on the sign. And you had, um, prohibited internally lit. But there were still, there's still the possibility in the non-residential zones of signs that are lit. Illuminated but not internally illuminated, so I guess they'd be, maybe have a light shining on them. Would be what I think they were thinking.
We can, we already, we already have an ordinance against internally lit signs.
Right, but what about signs that have a light like aimed at them?
Yeah, if it's a business sign, we think that that should stay on until the business closed during business hours. Yeah.
Right. And I think that's what they were. What he was saying, isn't it?
Well, the number six says an hour before.
Operations prohibited from one hour. After local sunset to one hour before local sunrise.
It gets dark here.
Okay, so that is.
Yeah, I think it's relevant here.
Okay, so it's not related to when the business is open, it's more sunrise and sunset.
Right.
Okay, and you want to have it be related to when the business is open?
Yes.
I think that's necessary, Nancy. If you put your business sign off at five o'clock, everybody's gonna think you're closed.
Oh, right, 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 yes.
Know what I mean?
Gotcha, okay. Okay, so now I've just opened that up, let me go down and find that section.
I need that.
So this is number four, is that what we're looking at?
Number four and number six.
Okay, so first I don't. Turned off, at, so it says after business hours, right? So is that one okay, or is that one when you wanted to change?
No, number four is what we want to keep, number six we decided to get rid of.
Okay, and so number six, moment of signs, prohibited for one hour. So would you want to change that instead to when the businesses are closed? Number six?
I'm sorry?
Did you want to change the language in number six to be related to, um, business hours rather than sunset and sunrise?
No, we're just gonna get rid of number six because it's covered in number four.
And it's covered in number four.
Bailey, go ahead.
Okay.
I think, I don't think it's, um. Clear enough that it's covered in number four. I would suggest adding a note for. Where it says all non-essential lighting, should say all non-essential lighting and illuminated signs, just so it's clear. And then removing six is completely covered there.
Okay.
Adding what to it, I'm sorry?
Uh, in number four curfew, where it says all non-essential lighting shall be turned off. I think we should add all non-essential lighting and illuminated signage. So that we're sure that number six is covered still.
Yep.
Brian, are you okay with that?
Uh, yes, I am.
Wes?
Yes.
Yes, alright. Perfect.
So I'm sorry to be late jumping in here, so you've been through the first sections, were those all changes all okay?
Uh.
We're just adding the 60 days.
We're at, on number four, we're adding the 60 days.
And a definition for fully shielded.
Yeah, and definition for fully shielded.
Okay, and which, which four is this now? This is four in section exemptions?
Oh, sorry, section three.
Number one exemptions?
Section.
Yes.
Yes, exemptions, yeah.
Okay, so short-term use, and what did you change there?
60 days.
Okay, so changed short-term to, to be defined as 60 days?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Alright, does anybody have anything else for chapter 32?
So does it say like up to 60 days or something like that, or?
Yeah, it'd be like a maximum of 60 days, Nancy.
Right.
And the reason being is for Christmas, you know, people.
Sure. Right.
Thanksgiving to New Year, you know what I mean?
Yep, sure, I know. Okay.
Alright, thank you for raising your hand, Bailey. What, uh?
One thing that we didn't address was the other new section in lighting at the very end, seven, public lighting. A lot, having the town manager deem some things, public safety hazards, to allow for public lighting. On pu, like street, streetlights and such.
I'm okay with that one.
Yeah, I, I think the idea he had was just, um, you know, to have some kind of a filter that it would go through for, um. Determining if you needed a light, and that would actually give you some leverage to say, well. Somebody requests a new streetlight, you can say, well, let's see if we can solve the problem a different way. Um, you know, maybe. Illuminated paint or something on a crosswalk or whatever it might be, but that would just give you the latitude to, uh, review that request.
Brian, what are your thoughts on number seven?
I. I would agree with that, I guess. Uh, I liked Nancy's suggestion. That there are maybe some, some passive means. It's not something I had given a tremendous amount of thought to, but, but that sounds. As though it might be, uh. Certainly a possibility.
Alright.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's just, it's another step to go through, but I don't think there is a passive means of like making a public state or pedestrian, so then putting streetlights out.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, once, once you put down the reflective paint, then it becomes a headlight issue, is that correct? I mean, the, the whole point of the lights in the first place is that they're at night, and you would only need to see a pedestrian if you're in a vehicle. So the reflective paint would be working off your headlights, no?
Yeah, I, I think that's the idea, is, you know, instead of illuminating the whole area with a streetlight. Um, just, uh, do something to highlight the, the crosswalk.
Yeah, I don't know if I necessarily agree with that, because if you have somebody that's over on the sidewalk getting crossed, you're not gonna see them with the. Uh, paint.
Or walking down the side of the street.
Yeah, or walking down the side of the street.
Which has been many times, I've almost run somebody over.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Yeah, I mean, I think the idea here is just to, is to create the option, that new installations would be installed. Upon determination by the town manager that a public safety hazard exists in the area to be lit. So the town manager could say, yep, this is a hazard, we need to put in a light. Um, and that, that's the only way to mitigate that, um. That hazard. Uh, but the notion is just to at least think about it first before you do that, think if there's some other way to mitigate that hazard. So it doesn't prohibit you from putting in a light if you think it's needed to address a hazard.
Yeah, I mean, I don't mind adding.
Cause it doesn't restrict it, it does just give it an extra step and jump through.
Yeah.
I just need somebody like you, the town manager, just. You know, wanna fix everything up with fucking paint.
Alright, so we'll go ahead and just keep that, add that number seven or keep number seven?
And. Should be the town manager or should be the?
Well, you're adding, you're getting into contractual things here with CMP, so it, it would be above the code enforcement officer, it would be.
Thank you. Do we want to look at the memo that I gave you? Now or in the regular meeting?
Uh, we will look at that.
Oh, I don't have an agenda.
I will figure it out.
Use the desk.
Alright, so if, uh, we have nothing else, we'll close the public hearing for chapter 38 and open the public hearings for Rangel's North subdivision. Don't mess up that pizza crust. Wait, you come unmuted. You want to do a quick explanation, uh, Mr. Haley, of the, the paint?
Yes. Thanks on the pizza crust there, coach. So, on, on Rangel's North, what we're, what we're, what we're doing is, we had a, uh, the, uh. Consultant company, the engineers, mainland, did the plans for Rangel's North. And we got a road up there and it's called Big Snow Way, and then about 60 feet away, we have a hammerhead. Uh, which is not needed because the roads right there are so close. Um, and so what we want to do is take that extra hammerhead that, that doesn't mean anything and. Add it to lot number 100, which, uh, Aaron Washington is purchasing as soon as we get approval to do it. And we're gonna add that in and give it to him for extra space on his lot. That's what we'd like to do. Watching is good because it takes away a little bit more non-pervious. And there's no need for it, as the engineer agreed by making the plan for us.
Does anybody have any questions, Mr. Haley? Brian?
No.
Anybody out, zooming in? Alright. We'll close the meeting for Rangel's North and our regularly scheduled meeting is in seven minutes. Where we will. Go over, make votes on chapter 38 and the subdivision. Alright?
Alright, we'll see you at six.
Okay. Is there a lot of people?
There's four.
On what? Oh, Ellen's thing? What does Ellen do on the notice?
Is that everyone? Where's Brian?
He is not back yet.
What'd you say?
I think it might need a bacteria.
Oh.
Jesus Christ.
That's what I heard. Brian, you with us?
Yes, I am.
All right, so we'll open the regularly scheduled meeting at six o'clock. I will stand for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, liberty, and its role.
Bailey, there's no adjustments to the agenda, correct?
None.
Is there any public here to speak on a non-agenda item? No, okay. Review of minutes. We don't have any to do with. All right, correspondence. The only correspondence we have, we actually received today and it is in reference to the subdivision amendment for Rangelie North and it was from the only letter. And he is in agreement with the change. He's okay with it.
Perfect.
I know. All right, so new business. We're going to go to the subdivision application for Rangelie North. Brian and Wes, do you guys have any, I know you didn't have any questions during the public hearing, do you have any questions now?
They do not, no.
All right. Mr. Haley?
Where'd he go?
He's off making pizza.
He's got to go cook that pizza now.
All right.
Maybe it's for us.
I make a motion to advocate and will say present this application as owner.
I would second the motion.
I don't, are we doing the findings effect?
Yes.
I don't have one, so.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You want to help me?
Yep.
Okay, we're moving, we're on slide.
You, we can hear you.
Hello?
Hey. We can hear you. Okay. So I make a motion to plan for it as authority to consider this request for the subdivision amendments to previously approved subdivision plan as required by the account code, chapter thirty-three.
I second it.
I made a motion, Wes second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, I make a motion that the proposed amendment does not increase or decrease the total acreage from the original approved plan nor change the total number of lots in the subdivision.
I second it.
I made a motion, Wes second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All right, I make a motion that the proposed amendment does not create any lots that do not meet the minimum requirements of municipality.
I would second that.
I made a motion, Brian second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Every lot shall have access to it that is sufficient to afford a reasonable means of ingress and egress and egress for emergency vehicles as well as for all those likely in need or desire access to property in its intended use.
I second.
I made a motion, Wes second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I make a motion that any easements across lots or centered on a rear or a side lot line shall be provided for utilities where necessary and shall be at least twenty feet wide.
I second.
Make the motion, Wes second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Environmental impact. I make a motion that the proposed amendment does not modify the original approved plan notes and studies regarding environmental factors, including but not limited to solid waves, erosion, floodplain, wetlands, green for brooks, phosphorus, and natural values.
I second.
I made a motion, Wes second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I make a motion, the subdivision has adequate financial and technical capacity to meet the standards of this section.
I second.
I made a motion, Wes second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I make a motion that we approve the Rangelie North subdivision amendment.
I second.
I made a motion, Wes second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All right, there you go, Mr. Haley. You're welcome. I can read those. All right. Next, fine new business is a shore land zoning application for two fifty-six Rumford Road, submitted by Ellen Albright.
What are we doing there?
I'm sorry?
What are we doing there?
Here, I will provide the two. We just need to make a motion that the application is complete and go do a site visit.
Two fifty-six, wait, hold on, that's not that one. It's near Rumford Road.
It's right, right by the last one we did for Ellen when we did the site visit in the fall.
Right, that little red cabin or something?
If I can help you out, it's got the blue roof.
Oh, yeah, it's down or something.
Correct. It's one mile from the OG.
Yeah, Ellen said something about.
Yeah, so we are the camp owners, Denise and myself, and we're just excited to put a foundation on it so we can solidify it.
Is that all we're doing is a foundation?
No, we're actually putting a foundation, a new septic system, because we have a holding tank behind the camp and we feel that at some point that will fail. So we want a leach field across the street. We own another piece of property on the other side of seventeen. And we also would like to put a well in. And we're basically going to move the camp about four feet back from the water because we feel it's a little too close and we think that it would help preserve the waterfront much better if we did that.
I'm looking at the plan here, it says something about new expansion, or is that just the foundation? Are we putting?
Nope. I'm sorry, could you say that again?
It, the plan shows a new expansion, is that just the foundation or is, or are we putting an addition on the house?
It would be a side porch.
Okay.
I did double check on that, Wes, and they are within their thirty percent expansion.
Okay.
Okay.
So, yeah, we got to set a site visit then, right?
Yep, I'll take a motion to accept their application and discuss a site visit.
I'll second that motion.
Oh, right, I made a motion.
You made the motion.
I can't see that, when's the next meeting?
April twelfth.
Actually, we got the site visit, correct?
Yeah, I want to do the site visit.
It's thirteen for April, or fourteen?
Fourteen, it says on.
Fourteen will be our next meeting.
All right. So my motion is to accept the application for two sixty-six Rumford Road and schedule a site visit for.
Before you schedule a site visit, that's school vacation reginald, anybody plans on leaving?
Oh, that is school vacation week.
I have no plans of right now.
Why don't we get, why don't we get it done sooner than later then?
Are you going anywhere, Brian?
I'm not.
Then let's just schedule it. You said you weren't going anywhere?
I have no plans of right now.
Oh, all right. What do we have for next week? Or? Can you guys do next Wednesday for a site visit?
Good.
Brian?
Yes, absolutely.
That's my name.
All right, so. Did my motion put March twenty-fourth at, what time can you guys meet?
Thirty-first.
Whenever.
That would be the thirty-first, Rebecca?
Yes. It's five o'clock, okay?
Five will work for me.
All right.
Thirty-first?
Thirty-first at five. Brian seconded.
I already seconded.
Any discussion?
Nope.
All right.
This is Denise Sterns, I'm one of the owners as well.
Uh huh.
This is Denise Sterns, I'm Scott's sister, one of the owners. Do we need to be there for the site visit?
Let's suggest it, Ellen will probably be there.
Somebody needs to be there.
Yeah, somebody needs to be there.
Okay.
Yeah, either.
Yeah.
Eleanor Suzanne will be there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor? Brian in favor?
I am in favor, yes.
All right, so moving on to continuing business, chapter thirty-eight. I'm looking for the pinboard, I think you have it, the notes. So, chapter thirty-eight was sent to AvCog, AvCog returned it to Bailey. And Bailey, do you guys want to go over the notes really quick with your discussion? I don't know, I'll do my own.
Is, the document, the document I'm looking at is one hundred and twenty-seven pages, is that correct?
Okay, so that's chapter thirty-eight.
Are we just looking, so I'm looking, I should be looking for the amendment to that, the second email?
Yes. The second email was sent, there was notes from the code enforcement officer from Bailey.
All right.
That came from her discussion with AvCog.
Okay, give me just a second.
And it's just a memo to the planning board.
Yeah, I think I have that.
I didn't think we were putting hostels in.
It says I deleted hostile from the chart because of.
Leave hostels on land use tables but add language to include it in lodging house definitions, definition.
Bailey, you want to do an overview and then do your last review?
I can, so this memo, the blue is direct quotes from her email to me. And then I followed it up with my suggestions. So hostel, we did discuss and I thought it was removed because we talked about how it falls under the same as lodging house. So I'm just going to add it, add short language to the lodging house so that people can't say, oh, I want to build a hostel, it's not in here, so I can just build it. So we want to include that in the lodging house definition. Then the accessory dwellings. There's some confusion with AvCog. There's been quite a few notes back and forth in the past about it. I suggest that we just remove accessory dwellings. At this point, I consider them a secondary dwelling if it's the second and if it's third, fourth, fifth, I'm considering multi-family dwellings and handling them that way. I believe we should continue to do that and just add a footnote saying that accessory dwellings would fall under that category. And then the last thing is just the variance definition. I don't know why that was taken out or when that was taken out. It's in the existing code, we just want to put it back in so it's clear for people looking to do variances with the zoning board of appeals.
So can we go back to accessory dwelling? Do we have a, what is an accessory dwelling? Let me just see that first.
Yeah, just give me one second, I'll pull up the definition.
It is an apartment created by a party or an existing single family dwelling or accessory building into a separate dwelling and it containing not more than one bedroom and not more than seven hundred and fifty square feet total space.
Okay, so that's convert party or house, garage, whatever into an apartment. If we throw that under multifamily. Oh.
That's three or more.
Oh, that's three or more?
Yeah.
That's multifamily?
Yeah.
Okay. Does that mean like there's a lot of people that would put a, you know, an in-law apartment of the garage and I just, I just don't want to like make that like.
So.
Go ahead.
Adjusting this to say that it's either a two, two-family and multifamily dwellings are two different notes in the land use table. So if it's putting an apartment above the garage and they only have the one existing house, it's still going to be the same as it is right now, how I'm addressing it right now, where it's just a regular permit with, in, with me as a secondary dwelling.
Okay. All right. All right, hold on, I'll find that out. What do you think, Rebecca?
I, I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
We need to, how about you, Brian?
No, I'm comfortable and comfortable with the definition.
All right. All right, was there anything else, Bailey, besides what we discussed earlier?
Um, yeah, so aside from those first notes that were from AvCog that we just talked about, the ordinance committee in their last meeting between our last time talking about this was changing some of the zoning districts to allow more districts to have daycares and also to remove the alternative energy information in favor of them creating a whole new ordinance chapter for that, which has been asked for them to do by the Board of Selectmen.
So.
So basically all of our work we did on our alternative energy, they're going to throw it away?
Yeah.
That's.
Always, so taking out what, all the work we did with the alternate energy and what was the, what was before that, I'm sorry?
The daycares, allowing daycares and more.
What's more?
Yeah, we're a daycare allow.
Um, so then. Um, so then I think it was only a couple and it's still planning board review.
Let's work on daycare one here. Let's see here. Daycare home, no, planning board. We have it everywhere. And the planning board review, which is a way to stay.
Right, they kept the planning board review so that you're looking at daycare home, right?
Well, both of them. There's a daycare center and daycare home. We're not doing a daycare center in resource protection, shoreland, industrial, or on the seventeen.
Right, prior to this, we weren't allowing daycare center in woodland, residential or village. We were only allowing them in downtown commercial and commercial.
So they've changed this worksheet here? No, the, the I don't like that. I don't think that's the way it should be. Do we have to follow there?
We don't have to follow that suggestion. The suggestion was, it's still planning board review. I think they wanted to allow in more zones because there are people in those zoning districts who have a big enough piece of property where they wouldn't be disturbing neighbors and because it has to go to planning board, we could choose to ha- host a public hearing where neighbors could speak up and say that they don't want a daycare center next to their house and things like that.
I think what we were kind of looking at though, the reason why we split it up to a daycare center, daycare home, so like a daycare home would be like an at-home business, somebody to take care of, you know, after the kids, whatever it is. And the daycare center is more than that.
Correct.
That's why we separated it. And restricted the daycare center more than we restricted the daycare home.
We, they also looked at other commercial facilities and where they are allowed in determining that to allow those in, in more zones. If we want to remove them, I, I, we just need justified reasoning, I think, for taking them out of whatever zones you're thinking.
How did we set them up originally? We don't have our original one here, do we?
Originally, the, the daycare home is the same.
That's the same.
The daycare center was no everywhere except for downtown commercial and commercial.
Right.
To this.
And we set it up that way because that is a, that's going to be a business for somebody where they're employing you know, more than one person.
I, I, we had discussions on this. I think people shouldn't have to have a yeah, I, I think you should do how, I like it how we had it.
I am in agreement.
And I would agree with you both.
So we want to refer back to having it just in downtown commercial and commercial?
A daycare center, yes.
Yes.
The home, we would keep just the way it is.
I'm not going to disagree with you, but can we talk a little bit more about possibly woodland zone? Because other commercial entities are allowed in woodland zone for sure.
Sure. What's allowed in woodland zone for commercial?
Well, woodland zone is our, is our least restricted zone for, for anything. We allow accessory dwellings, we allow storage facilities without a dwelling, things like that. We allow, we allow you, like you can have a garage there, you can have a trailer there. Woodland zone is, is generally bigger lots. So we allow a little bit more. It's off the main road more.
Commercial businesses though in woodland zone.
Storage facilities is one that I know of a few in town that we allow in woodland zone.
Mark?
Yes. It sounds like you and the ordinance committee are in a disagreement. But the way this works, I think, is that the code enforcement officer and the planning board can make suggestions and recommendations to the ordinance committee, but the ordinance committee is the one that's in charge of the ordinance and I don't think if they've changed it, that you're allowed to change it back without further discussion and negotiation with them. I don't think it's up to the planning board to change that back.
Up to the planning board to vote and send it to the Board of Selectmen and this is for our view on chapter thirty eight. Chapter thirty eight is planning board.
It's a zoning ordinance.
It is. And when the Board of Selectmen get it, they'll see both recommendations, but the
I think you may need to get some legal advice on that.
Thank you, Mark.
Well, my recommendation is to send it the way it is.
The way we had it?
Yes.
Brian?
I agree with Wes. I don't understand why why there was a discussion over it in the first place, to be honest.
So we're, we're, we want to go back completely. We want to stay outside of woodland zone still?
I agree with the woodland zone. I don't mind having that put in there. I think when we originally discussed it, the biggest was, let me go back here.
They also are putting, they also recommend the daycare center in the residential zone.
Yeah, no.
Which I don't think we, 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 we had it in the residence. It's a business.
Yeah, we did not have a daycare centers in the residential zone. So take it out there, out of the village. We had it in downtown commercial, commercial. I, I, I don't mind having it.
In the woodland zone, I mean, are we going to set up a should, is, is this just going to be a blanket ordinance that we're proposing or should it be reviewed case by case?
Well, if we go to planning board. That's, it's not the thing that we're not allowing it in the woodland zone. It's that it would come to the planning board.
Okay, because I'm, you know, some people in woodland have ten acres. There are other people who are on a quarter acre. And might just because it's woodland, it's, it's not assumed that they have tons of space.
Right.
That's where the planning board review comes in.
Okay.
Well, then we, if, if we're gonna if we're going to allow it in woodland zone, maybe we should put a note in there of a minimum lot size.
Look, I mean, minimum lot size seems almost arbitrary without a site visit.
Yeah, that would be hard because you could have somebody who wants to do like a two classroom facility or somebody who wants to do a six classroom facility. You know what I mean? I mean, there's probably not enough kids for that, but.
Well, I don't know, whatever good it's on doing.
Well, let's, let's put it this way. Say you had a quarter acre, but you were completely surrounded by, in a budding property owner that's got two hundred acres of nothing but but trees. Did obviously you wouldn't be bothering anybody, but you're still on a quarter acre. You know, the, the lot size to me, like, it, it doesn't seem relevant. It's, it's more about the the physicality of the property itself.
Yeah, that's what you're saying. Well, then keep it in the woodland. But I wouldn't put it in the residential.
Alright, so let's clarify.
Or the village, the village.
Yeah, that's, okay, so daycare homes, we agree that that's all, we're keeping it the same.
Yeah.
And then daycare center, we're in agreement that it's no in resource protection, no in shorelands. Planning board for woodland. No for residential, no for village, planning board for downtown commercial, planning board for commercial, no for industrial and no for around seventeen overlay. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Alright, do you get that, Bailey?
Yes.
Okay.
And then what do they do with our alternative energy one? Here, let's see, hostel.
They actually want to create their own, its own ordinance. So take it out of chapter thirty eight completely.
Okay.
And create their own ordinance. So I think it would still be in the land use chart. But the land, whatever's put in the land use chart will be in accordance to whatever the, the, the new ordinance is.
And does that come in front of the planning board for review?
I think that would be up to the Board of Selectmen to make a joint effort with ordinance committee and planning board.
Because it's not a chapter.
Yeah, it's starting
They're gonna put it in our land use table, which is chapter thirty eight.
So we can, yeah, I think it's that what their plan should be in the land use chart. But that would come to us, but the actual, just kind of like with the marijuana ordinance. When that came through, the only part that the planning board reviewed was what was put in the land use table.
Right.
So, but the specifics of the ordinance itself really weren't up to us.
Okay.
Alright, are you okay with that? All that, Brian?
Yeah, it, it's the alternative energy is starting to become more complicated and, and more detailed and should probably have its own place.
I agree completely. It's very detailed. There's so much involved with, I mean, yeah. So much I haven't
But it does take all of our work and just throws it away.
Well, I would like some of our, I would like our recommendations to stay with the, the ordinance committee already has our recommendations.
Yeah, they will solve their recommendations. I'm going to be part of the meetings where they're creating this new ordinance and I'm going to keep those recommendations in mind.
Okay.
Okay. Was there anything else? So you have Bailey, you, you have you have all the changes that we have made, that we decided that all like getting in in this meeting?
Yes, I have the changes for lighting, accepting some of the changes and adding a few things that we talked about. And then I have that we agreed with the notes from the memo. Aside from daycare center, we're having that be commercial, downtown commercial and woodland only.
Okay. Is there anything else from the board? No. Alright, um so I need a motion to accept the changes that were presented this evening by the planning board. I make a motion that we accept all the changes that we made tonight.
I, I second the motion.
Brian second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Then I need the motion to send the Board of Select, uh, send chapter thirty eight with the approved changes to the selectmen to approve as a warrant or a call.
I'd second that motion as well.
I made a motion, Brian second, any discussion? So the only discussion I have with that, Bailey, do you want the planning board to create a letter or are you preferable with explaining why we wanted those changes back from the daycare centers?
I'm comfortable explaining the daycare centers.
Okay, perfect. You guys okay with all that?
I trust Bailey.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
When's the Board of Selectmen meeting?
It is, um, April? Oh, let's say April fifteenth is their next meeting. That is actually the public hearing for the first draft of the warrant. So I'm not sure if they'll would vote on it at that meeting where it's a public hearing or if they would vote on it at the next meeting that they have discussed the warrants. So that's up to them to decide. Alright, does anybody have anything else? Nope, so our next meeting is going to be March thirty first, five P M for the site visit. And my guess is we'll probably be skipping the April fourteenth. So, alright, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn at six thirty eight.
I'll second it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you Bailey, thank you everyone.